Well, Chad was up there today. He said he caught weather and wind, got him locked up. They just didn't get an option.
Real trouble, y'all. I saw two bad hoes. Sorry.
Call the board meeting.
All in order, Mr. Recchell. All in order, gentlemen. Present, please write the implication on this Navarri Oso and the pledge by Mr. Pena.
Everybody, please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come for you today in humility and faith. We thank you for all you've given us and the many blessings in our lives. We ask for your guidance and strength. Show us the way. Fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us remember your love and grace and to be faithful in our service to you. Give us the patience and understanding to place life challenges with grace. We ask these things in your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a statement I'd like to read. The city is aware of the current issues surrounding the SecurX situation and our legal counsel. This is something we take very seriously and are devoting our resources to come to a proper resolution. Where this issue is complex involving current litigation, we do not feel it's proper to discuss in public until we know more about the facts. SecurX has also threatened the city with possible legal action which further complicates things. The legal process between the parties is advancing very quickly. It may be resolved in a couple of weeks. As the city navigates through these issues, we will respond publicly as proper. Need a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So, sir.
About this, Davey. Second, about this, Wade. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We got some certificates handed out.
For service.
First one is fifteen years dedication, commitment loyalty to City motion spring department lieutenant by.
All right.
Next is ten years dedication, commitment loyalty to the city motion spring public work.
Thank you.
Ten years of dedication, commitment loyalty to the city motion spring fire department. How do you achieve? Thank you.
Next, there's five years of dedication, commitment loyalty to the city of Ocean Springs Fire Department firefighter Connor Hatt. Next one is five years dedication, commitment loyalty to the city of Ocean Springs Parks Department, Parks Ground Maintenance, Quentin Anderson. Public is invited to address the board for three minutes each for a maximum period of thirty minutes. All regarding issues listed on this agenda, please identify yourself in the agenda item before speaking.
William Latson of every particularly trace of board one. I want to talk about six A and B. Each one of you aldermen, the department has had an opportunity to review, make comment, input, whatever, to the bid documents, to bid plans, anything associated with the Ocean Springs Road rehab. Within that, it called out twenty-five mile per hour speed limit in the bid documents. Opened right here at City Hall and awarded the line construction. Jennifer, I'll give you this, you have firm in your convictions, it's going to be thirty-five and not change in the contract. Now, that said, lane construction advertised, big uproar, they say twenty-five, here's the roundabout. Public forum, I asked a question. Is that part of the contract? A lane construction employee answered back, yes. Signing will put it out as part of the contract. So, I guess it's twenty-five. Now, golf carts. Why? Why don't golf carts? Why? That group of citizens being excluded. Why? Unsafe? Down here is unsafe. Crossing road in Martin Luther King, attached life insurance real quick there. Why? No. You want to slow them down? Chief, often and a lot, you better start slowing them down highway pit itself because they got a head of steam by the time they get to Dina. Okay? Give us an opportunity to have our golf carts like most of the city has. Don't hound truckers just because of, oh, it's not safe on Ocean Springs Road. Speed limit's not going to change. It's going to be thirty-five. I'm sorry, guys. You signed the contract. Twenty-five is the speed limit. Golf carts can be driven on twenty-five and above. So, that's all I have, say, like.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address any items on the agenda? Okay, we move on to old business. Item five, approve the Harper Grove subdivision final plat and accept the performance bond and maintenance bond. Will?
Yeah, this came up, I believe, last board meeting and they were, the subdivision was told to go get the necessary bond and I thought that was obviously the clear direction. I've had conversations with the representatives of the subdivision and it's clear to me that the UDC requires a three-year bond, maintenance bond, which I don't believe they secured. I believe they're here to speak about it if y'all are here.
Moving forward.
Freddie Fountain with Fountain Associates, thirteen-three, thirty-four, Seaway Road, Suite 202, Gulfport, Mississippi. Yes, sir, we're the engineers on the project and we assisted in overseeing construction. Construction is completed on this project the first week of October. Since then, we've been working with the city planning department, legal department, on trying to obtain the necessary bonds for this project. In this, the city's UDC does require that we found out now, three-year maintenance bond, which is above and beyond what most cities and counties require in the area. You know, we had a lot of confusion throughout the process on what the bond amount was going to be and things of that nature. What I would like to ask for tonight, because of all the communication breakdowns and the UDC is not very clear, it contradicts each other, contradicts itself in multiple areas. And I've had this discussion with the planning department and with the legal department that, you know, some things need to be updated with the UDC to make it more clear and concise. Couple of things that I wanted to read here, and this was a problem that we had early on, was determining the bond amount. In the UDC, it says that there was a fee schedule approved by the board alderman and administered by the planning department. Throughout our process, we've had conversations, what is the bond amount to be determined? I was told at one point, the planning director's job, at one point, this public works director's job, at one point, I was told that the planning department's engineer determined the bond amount, all to come back around to, we determined what the construction amount was of the project and we had to bond it for. At one point, it was two times the construction amount. Then it was later determined that we bonded it for one hundred percent of the construction amount. Other cities don't require that much bond, and I'm not saying that Ocean Springs should follow what other cities do, I'm just saying that it's not clear and concise as to what direction we need to be heading in. What I would ask for tonight, because we have provided a two-year maintenance bond, which is what was previously discussed with some of the staff, that bond is in place and in the UDC, it states that there should be a three-year bond in place, but it can be released earlier if eighty-five percent of those units receive a certificate of occupancy. But the bond has to be a minimum of two years. So, what I would like to ask the board is for us to be able to proceed with the final plat approval as is with the two-year bond in place, with the contingency that we agree on the record, that if eighty-five percent of the units aren't built within that two years, the developer will provide an extra one-year bond.
I did talk to one of the representatives today from the developer. From what it sounds like to me, depending on permitting and, you know, resources in the building department, it seems like they're, they're going to build it out. It's not going to, this is not going to be something that's going to be drawn out. And I know that, I've seen some of the projects they've done by the interstate and Gulfport and other areas, and they, they're pretty quick at that. And I think for the size of that neighborhood that has developed over there, I think that on, I think that that's going to be built out within a year.
Ricky, I'll only add, I mean, this is a section two-point-two-two final plat of the UDC. The section C is referencing about the eighty-five percent of the number of lots when the bond can be released by the board. It is clear that you require three years on the front end. And if eighty-five percent comes up, then the city can release it. It has to be after two years at least, but on the front end, it does require a three-year bond. So, I'll stick to that as my legal advice to y'all. I'll leave to that.
Anybody else?
What's been the, excuse me, what's been the issue with the bonding? I mean, I know it's been, you know, several months you've tried to get the bond in place. Now, you've got one, but it's a year short of the requirement. So, what's, what's the issue? I guess, help me understand why three years is the issue?
So, so, yes, we have been working on getting the bonds since we turned the project in originally in October. So, it was, like I said, at one point, we didn't know the bond amount. Then when we knew the bond amount, okay, well, we have to get it for twice the construction price. Well then, okay, now you only have to get it for a hundred percent of the construction amount. And then, but you got to get it for three years. Then a later conversation was had, you only got to have it for two years.
I get that, but once you came to the realization of what your bond amount had to be, and then it had to be three years, how did we end up with a two-year bond and not a three?
Because we had a later conversation and they said, okay, well, it was determined that there was another section of the UDC that stated a two-year maintenance bond was required. And I know what we was going to say, it was a different section that was referring to driveway access.
I mean, just on that point, that's referring to driveway access, it's wholly separate section, not final plat approval. And that, that reference to two years, that was never made by the city. That was the subdivision's own, you know, they came up that with their own. I mean, I've never said two years, or no one from the city ever said two years.
So, we were under the impression that a two-year bond was going to be required following the last board meeting that we were at.
So, I guess the question, who told you that? Or did you just assume?
There was a conversation and I wasn't involved in it. I was out of town at the time. Both we moved forward with the two-year bond in place, and that bond was turned in within one week of the last meeting. And then, in the last week is whenever we were told, no, three-year bond's going to be required.
How hard is it to get the year added?
Well, I mean.
Another meeting?
Another meeting, another month, another interest payment, another fifty percent more on the cost of the bond.
I hear you. And, you know, I know we've had some conversations on this, but, you know, we have to follow the process, man. We have to follow our attorney's advice. And he's telling us we should hold up, I think is what I'm hearing, until we get a three-year bond.
I understand. And as, as I stated, I understand what the UDC says, but, you know, there's been a lot of back and forth and miscommunication on both parties' parts. I'm not blaming anybody. But to me, it seems a little excessive whenever this project will be built out in less than two years and the bond will be released in less than two years anyways.
I hear you, but there's no guarantee of that either.
There's not.
We've had, we've had good conversations about this. We just disagree with what the UDC says a bit, but.
And look, again, I'm not saying, not directing anything towards the staff or counsel. I'm just, I am directing at the UDC because there are conflicting and unconcise issues with the UDC.
Anybody else having more questions for Mr. Fountain? Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, is there a motion to, where you want the table or how do y'all want to handle this?
Here, I think we have to table it until we get a three-year bond.
Okay. Will, we need a motion on that?
Oh, yeah. That's my motion.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Pena. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, who was the second? Mr. Hent?
Hent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, discussion of the recommendation to change the speed limit on Ocean Springs Road from thirty-five miles an hour to twenty-five miles an hour, from the roundabout to, you know, or just.
So, I've asked Ben Smith from VMA to come and speak on this as well. But the recommendation is twenty-five miles an hour for the scope of work that's been conducted on this project. And like I said, Ben will elaborate a little bit further, but the entire design was meant to slow down traffic. And because of factoring in the pedestrian walkway, in the matter of public safety, now we are, we're looking at vehicular traffic as well. So, this is kind of twofold. If we do decide to adhere to the MDOT and engineer recommendations of twenty-five miles per hour speed limit, then that opens up the road for golf carts. And I'm not suggesting that we take golf carts off the table, but I think it's prudent, given the history of that road and given the fact that we don't have sufficient data on whether or not the project has fulfilled its intent as far as slowing the traffic down. It behooves us not to do some vehicular and pedestrians' traffic studies first before we just arbitrarily allow golf carts onto that road. So, I did have Will draw up a draft ordinance that just excludes Ocean Springs Road from the golf cart ordinance until such studies can be conducted and we can safely say, yes, golf carts can operate on that road. But Ben, would you mind coming up and elaborating on the project itself and where we're looking at as far as the speed limit and whatnot?
Sure, yeah. Good evening. Again, my name's Ben Smith, Brown Mitchell Alexander. Our firm was the design engineer for the Ocean Springs Road project. And so, just to kind of back up a little bit beyond just the design and construction of the project that's underway right now, before we got started on the project, there was a study done that was commissioned by Jackson County and Gulf Regional Planning Commission to look at that corridor. And I think the scope of that project was from Highway ninety all the way to Highway fifty-seven. The intent was what enhancements could be done for that road to make it safe, improve its function, its usability by all users. And I think that was done in twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen. I know that a study was completed, I think around twenty-seventeen. And through that planning effort, there were committee meetings held to get comments from the public on what they wanted to see, what was consistent with the long-range plans for that road. And the primary issues and concern that came out of that study were, and it was obvious to anybody using it, there were zero pedestrian bicycle facilities on that road. It's a two-lane facility that only provided vehicular access along that corridor. So, one of the primary desires was to provide pedestrian bicycle facilities. So, that, that was one. And one of the other issues that was discovered, again, due to study, but it was obvious to anybody that used it, that that road operated or allowed vehicles to operate at really high rates of speed. I shared a little bit of data with you all through an email, just kind of summarizing. I think through the speed studies that were done at a couple of different locations along the route, the observed operating speed, I think seventy-plus percent of all cars were operating ten miles an hour or greater than the speed limit, which was thirty-five in some areas and forty-five on the northern limit. So, when you're mixing or encouraging or inducing pedestrians and bicyclists to use that road, you certainly want to try to do anything you can to slow vehicles down. And, I mean, this has been proven time and time again, no matter often what you posted at, if it's allowed to operate that way, if people driving feel like they can drive fast, right or wrong, they're going to. And so, knowing we were putting pedestrians and bicyclists and wanting them to use it when we built it, one of the other outcomes of that study and one of the things we looked at when we were doing the design work was how do we slow cars down through a primarily residential neighborhood where we are encouraging pedestrians and bicyclists to use it? So, there were kind of key, three key things. One was the introduction of the roundabout. Obviously, there were several things we were trying to accomplish with the roundabout. One was improving that intersection's flow so that traffic coming north and south to ninety and going up to the neighborhoods of that area would be able to operate safely and efficiently through there, also providing left turn access to the hospital, off Grove or on Grove when coming from the hospital. So, that, that was to help improve traffic flow there at that intersection, but also it requires people to slow down. You can't, you know, if you were coming off ninety in the condition before the roundabout was there, it was, how fast can I speed up and get up Ocean Springs Road? So, that's when speed started accelerating. So, the part of the goal of the roundabout was to prevent that from happening. Everybody has to slow down. The roundabout is designed to be operated at fifteen miles an hour. That's pretty conventional for most roundabouts. So, that's point one of how we were going to slow traffic down, both come northbound and southbound. The other was doing protected median turns at several of the neighborhood entrances. So, of course, everybody's been on it recently. There's the little splitter islands that force you to take a slight lane shift. Again, that's intended to help slow people down, so it's not just a straightaway through there, while also providing protected left turns. That way, there's not a continuous turn lane, which is proven time and time again, caused accidents. So, that's another inducement to slow down. And of course, the final one, one is the obvious, posting the speed limit at twenty-five miles an hour. A little bit of other data that I think I provided as well was just some, just national statistics of injuries and survivability of pedestrians and bicyclists at certain rates of speed. And if you're on a bike or if you're pedestrian and you get hit at twenty-five miles an hour, still going to cause damage and be painful and unfortunate, but there's a great chance you survive. At thirty-five, that number goes way, way down, and certainly at forty-five, it gets, I think it's fifty percent or less survivability. So, just some of the reasons why we're making that recommendation and why the road was designed to slow people down. It doesn't prevent vehicles from traveling inefficiently. There's been, other than the slight inconvenience of having to go a little bit slower, there's no major delay caused by that. I think we ran a real simple calculation that said, if I'm going from Dina Road to Highway ninety, there's a less than thirty-second delay in your trip time from those two locations. So, that's just some brief, high-level background on why we made that recommendation and why the design was completed the way it was. And so, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Anyone have any questions for Ben?
So, Ben, what, I know you went through explaining why it dropped to twenty-five, but, I mean, we have a lot of streets in Ocean Springs that are thirty-five and thirty with sidewalks right next to the road.
We sure do.
So, is there a reason we're dropping all the way to twenty-five, or can we consider thirty or thirty-five, remain at thirty-five? I mean, I don't see the.
So, I think from what's available and can be considered is certainly the board's prerogative. I would say, just a couple of points. One, for the twenty-five mile an hour transition. So, if we know the roundabout is at fifteen, it's generally prudent to sort of transition in ten mile an hour increase increments. So, if I'm going from south to north, coming out of a road about fifteen, have a transition zone to twenty-five, then you could move to thirty-five. That would be, you know, if you said, hey, we would rather have a higher rate of speed allowed in that area, you'd still want to make that transition smooth. So, that'd be just one point. The other is just that pure pedestrian and bicyclist safety. And frankly, vehicular safety, I mean, the same thing, vehicle accidents at lower rates of speed, also, you know, prevent major accidents. Those would be just the two key things. I think to the other point, I would say, you're right, we do have lots of streets in the city where we've got, you know, higher posted speeds. I live right off Government Street and bike walk run there at thirty-five miles an hour and do it early in the morning. It's not comfortable. So, as a user, I would say, you know, this would be even more unpopular probably, but I would be advocating for lower speed in some of the residential areas of Government Street. And I'm sure plenty of people would be upset with me for that, but it's still not an enjoyable trip often.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
So, if, I guess if we are open to having the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, I can have Will draw up the ordinance and we can present it with the golf cart ordinance amendment as well at the next meeting?
I mean, do we want to follow through with the golf cart ordinance? If you're going to bring it to twenty-five and all the protections that have been put in place, I don't see why keeping those residents from being able to have their golf cart would be.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you completely on that. There's still a lot that needs to be completed with this project, and Ben can concur on that. There are some additional added safety features that we're looking at, planting mature trees between the road and the walking path along with shrubbery. I think the initial concern is, and like I said, I'm not, that has been the feedback is, you know, now that we're connecting all the neighborhoods, and I know that there are people driving on there with their golf carts now because I've seen it. The biggest concern is there's a lot of traffic on that road. We don't know how the project is going to impact that traffic yet. Is it going to, you know, are people going to not take that road because of the roundabout? Are they going to like to go down it because of the novelty of it? We don't know. Are they going to adhere to the speed limit? And the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, they did put the black and whites out erroneously. Those should have been the orange and black. They're, they're on order. They didn't have them in. Because it is still considered a construction zone. Lane construction has not done their final walkthrough yet. And then in addition, once they're done, then public works is going to be coming in. We're going to be doing the landscaping aspects of it and things like that. So, to your point, I just, I'm, I'm concerned from a safety standpoint of keeping this speed limit at. speed limit at 35 with not having those buffers in place between the road and the sidewalk. And I think, Alan, we had an incident last week just north of Dina, where a truck went off the road and into the privacy fence.
Yeah. And two, I think, a point that's not being mentioned, if you will, folks in that area, excuse me, I'm a bit hoarse, but the folks in that area will have to travel obviously south on Ocean Springs Road. 90 is not a golf cart road, even if they go across 90 to Government. Government is not a golf cart, that's a 35 zone through there. So, I think we...
They're going to depart, too. Yeah, well, what they're going to do, they're going to duck off into King Henry and they're going to go through...
Well, I think we need to take a look and just make some plans. We're tasked with public safety amongst other things, and so, I think, I'd like to see some thought put into this instead of just dumping it off and all of a sudden, we've got golf cart people on Ocean Springs Road or wherever you're talking about, Fort Vau. Even in Fort Vau, to me, they've got to get to 90 and go across to Government Street.
And there's a way to do it, there's a path.
Yeah, okay.
But to your point, the concern is just saying, okay, yeah, sure, 30 mile, golf carts are involved.
Your word.
We don't have any, you know, verifiable data as to whether or not that's safe for everybody involved. So, I'm not, like I said, we're not taking golf carts off the table, it's just a temporary stay until we can conduct the studies and have that data and responsibly say, yeah, sure, we can have golf carts on this road.
They're on there now, right?
I don't know what the study...
Well, they're not on there legally, so...
They are because it's posted 25 miles an hour.
It's a construction zone, they shouldn't be on the road, and Chief American concur on that one. It's supposed to be, it's a construction zone, they are not allowed in that area.
I don't know about that.
By 45 miles an hour at that stage where it stops to 35 or 45, that's a big difference.
Yeah, and then when they come in and they got a golf cart, that they're going to ride right off the road, run off the road. I'm just, in the name of public safety, I'm not comfortable with that.
Chief, is that correct? You know, right now, being a construction zone, it's posted at 25 mile an hour where a black and white speed limit sign is as the rest of the city.
So, yeah, so, it's supposed to be orange. Okay, so, by ordinance, it's not 25, it's whatever was 35 before. So, I would say, no, golf carts are not supposed to be on it because it's a construction, it's supposed to be the orange signs.
Those black and whites are supposed to be bagged and the orange 25 mile per hour signs are supposed to be right underneath them. And I've been battling that a little bit because I've been told that, well, that's not us, that's lane. So, I mean, not throw anybody under that, that's what we're dealing with, so it's a technicality.
If I was driving my golf cart and didn't know what was going on, I wouldn't be on that street.
That's why I have been on social media and we have been pushing this information out.
When is Jimmy going to have signs out there?
I don't know. We should start seeing them tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
I got about four foot back to the hill bridge.
And we're going to bag the black and white ones.
Guarding been run over tonight, though?
Yeah. Still, still, no fence on the other side of Dean.
There's a little difference out there, it's actually worse than Government Street out there for golf carts. I can't believe we would even consider that, but it's not my...
What, 25?
Without, without the verifiable data, no, I wouldn't. But if the data comes back that, you know, they're, it's amenable to golf carts, given the other safety factors that we're putting in, sure. Like I said, it's not off the table, it's not, no, it's just not yet, or not now.
Jennifer, make a motion after that.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion to lower the speed limit per MDOT and Engineers' recommendations to 25 miles per hour on Ocean Springs Road between the roundabout and Dina.
A motion by Ms. Burgess is their second.
Second, second.
Ms. Papania seconds it. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, they're supposed, this is a discussion item, and I got 179-page docket, document today to read, and we're going to vote on it tonight.
This is a draft, 2017.
The motion could be to authorize me to draft it, it'll have to be by ordinance.
Right, right, to draft it, I've correctioned.
The speed limits are obviously by ordinance, so it will have, it'll have to be in ordinance.
We're in agreement of the 25 mile per hour, then we vote on the ordinance and then we vote on that. But, so I guess the motion is not to lower the speed limit, the motion is to have you draft an ordinance.
Correct.
To lower the speed limit to 25 miles per hour between the roundabout and Dina. My apologies.
Which costs money to do until we know for sure we're doing that. Unless it's a day-to-day and it doesn't cost us anything extra.
You don't want him to draw up an ordinance.
If the road was designed for 25 miles an hour, it should happen at 25 miles an hour. That's kind of common sense to me. So, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seems like we got a little difference of opinion here.
Second.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to give you a roll call on this one.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, you want to, you don't want to address this golf cart issue now, then?
And this golf cart one is just on the agenda and discussion item as we've kind of already discussed, but if you want to discuss further.
Anybody got any more comments on golf carts? Okay, moving on to consent agenda, anybody have anything to pull from the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
My motion, Mr. Blackman, second by...
Second.
MP, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Department of Reports, does anybody have anything to pull from the DACA claims? A motion due...
Present DACA claims, all expenditures are appropriate and authorized by law, it's read several minutes.
Mr. Blackman?
Second.
Ms. Papania, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone have any questions on the monthly budget report?
I got, I don't know what's...
Make a motion to approve the monthly budget report.
A motion by Mr. Epi.
Second.
And Mr. Blackman, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. City Clerk authorized budget amendments, emergency purchases from Indy cash balance, Patty?
Yes, I was going to clean up, I'm going to do a bigger budget amendment, probably February, but that was things that had already happened that just needed to be cleaned up to finish the police cars, and they're on and thought they needed air conditioning and heaters, so that's just, I just couldn't push that one off, I didn't want this to be a negative.
Air tires, too, huh, there? There you go.
I'll make a motion to authorize the budget amendments.
My Mr. MP.
Second.
Mr. Blackman, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. General public comment, public is invited to address the board, three minutes each for a maximum period of 30 minutes. Only two speakers will be allowed per side of each issue, please identify yourself before speaking.
Good evening. Paul, you come here, right?
Yes, sir. We got two of y'all going at once, we need one of y'all up there.
Mine's on you.
Yeah.
You go back there. Thank you. Me, James Lewis, 55, came back around. I want to talk about something that you all went back in and did take care of, but we still have a problem, and that's MLK, that's on this there at Baptist Church, speed limit is posted, but the people just don't obey the speed limit. I almost got killed in that crosswalk, y'all did an outstanding job going back in and posted the sign, but the people just don't get it. They're constantly riding 35 and sometimes people trying to cross from, going from the church over to the parking lot, and I was getting on them. And if something needs to be done, traffic tickets or something to slow these people down because they just don't get it. Sign is there, quite visible, but they just don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Battered, another one, six feet trace. Let's talk about this beautification plan, Board of One, all of these keeps advertising, talking about on those Supreme Road. Have y'all seen the details of this?
Yes.
No, yes, no, I've got a lot of yeses and no's. Cypress trees between the road and the walkway? We know what a Cypress knot does, a knee, Cypress knee, give it three, four years. You look like, might as well move to New Orleans and bounce out of them roads. Okay? How many pallets of sod was laid down, Mr. Engineer? How many pallets of sod was used to Ocean Springs Road?
Mr. Battered, to address the board, please.
Okay. I saw it happen. We're going to dig that sod up that packed, prepared, paid for, put mulch grass in, put trees in, put shrubs in? We've got better things to spend our money on than mulch grass. Trees, they're going to look like those creek bottoms out on Highway 90 after they've been run over four or five times. We've got infrastructure we can use our money on. Other things, out east, empty buildings, trees that need repair, three lights. We've got better things to do with our money than replacing the grass. Please get together and figure out a good plan. Number one, we're going to spend all our money out front doing.
Richard Daniels, 2700 Tom Drive, mine is on the short-term rental, 300 McCool Street, I've come here several times to talk about this. Within that area, they have 10 short-term rentals. To the left of that, to the left of that, 300, I mean, to the left of it is 298, to the left of that is 296, short-term rental. 300, to the other side of it, there's two on the backside of it, on Holcomb Boulevard. So, those four people at 298 are surrounded by short-term rentals. 10 in that area. We're changing our neighborhoods, we're changing our city. I can't believe we let it go that far. 115, that's like 230 people, kids, just two per family that we taken out of the school system. I talked to the superintendent, he said, oh, park numbers are plummeting. He wouldn't comment on if it's short-term rentals or not. But that's an issue we need to think of. I mean, I've heard that with these new hotels and everything, short-term rentals are going to be caught wayside. So, my 92-year-old mother lives at 295 McCool Street, and we're going to put a short-term rental, short-term rental, two on Holcomb, some on Arbor Vista. We've got to stop this, guys. The last time we even addressed this was 2015, that's 10 years ago. So, I can see that the 25 point, you address it, go over what the ordinance is, and make changes to it. We haven't done anything to that. We have no say-so in the short-term rental. It's always passed, the only one I don't know that hasn't passed was Scott Walker on East Beach. That's the only one I know that hasn't been passed. It's ridiculous. And, so, that's McCool Street is off of Holcomb. How many are on Front Beach and East Beach short-term rentals? I know of one, it's right next to the guy's house. So, we just go by no short-term rental where rich people live? I mean, we've got to do something. And I've got, I'd like to put something, a police report in the record, you all need to send us to, in June at 298 McCool Street, they had an incident, the police came, three armed guys were out front of that house. I don't know if that on 296 was ever put in there, but I would like to put this report in there. Three armed guards, three armed guards. My daughter calls me on vacation, she says, Dad, there's three armed guards in front of, it used to be the Miller's house. Straight on the Cool Street, you couldn't get by, down Mitchell, you couldn't get by, so we're going to put, two right by each other? We've got to do something about this. I've been fighting this, I've come up here to the planning commission, I come up to you guys. I just need some help, man. We don't need another short-term rental. And that small house, when it was a rental, was dilapidated, they didn't do anything about it, and now that they want to make it a short-term rental, they fixed it up. And the people that are doing it, one of them on a permit is a convicted felon, real estate.
This is, you meant 13 minutes.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Richard, I support what you're saying, and I do not support short-term rentals in general in Ocean Springs, and I hope you continue to fight the battle.
I'm here for the other side, Aaron Getch, 139 Waters Edge. I'm a Ocean Springs resident, short-term rental owner, but, sure, it's Aaron Getch, 139 Waters Edge. Ocean Springs resident, short-term rental owner, but I'm here primarily because I'm a private property rights enthusiast. I don't believe there's a role for city government constantly changing these regulations. I think it opens yourself up to legal challenges, I don't think that's the best use of taxpayer resources. Continuing to burden the planning department and the building department with these inspections with these ever-changing rules and regulations and maps in different districts, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I did see a draft of the, you know, the newest idea for short-term rentals. I guarantee you're going to get legal challenges on something like that, to put that burden on property owners that want to do that. I believe everybody on this board at one point in time either identified as a Republican or ran as a Republican. I hope I don't have to remind you that one of the hallmarks of the Republican Party brand is respect for free markets and private property rights. Having government, city government come in here and constantly change the rules nonstop on this, it's not constitutional, it's not Republican, it's not small government, there's not a role for it. I think, but the previous opposition to the short-term rentals hit the nail on the head when he said there's an increase in hotels coming, and these short-term rentals are going to, quote unquote, go by the wayside. Why not let the free market suss this out? It's not going to be block after block after block, there's limits to these things based on demand for these things. Let the winners win, let the losers lose, the quality ones will stay, the ones that have issues aren't going to, aren't going to be able to survive in a, in a, in a market that's getting more and more competitive. Anybody that's opposed to these, I'm sorry, you don't have constitutional rights to pick your neighbor, any more than you get to pick your neighbor's landscape. You start going down this road, it's going to get very, very close to each other's style of rules. No role for that in Ocean Springs, in my opinion. I'll be here after the meeting, I've owned these things for several years, I've had a lot of interaction, if anybody wants to discuss it. Thank you.
Sean Varnell, 211 Mason Court, I'm on the same situation about 300 McCool. I understand I'm not picking neighbors, but I have grandchildren that live down the road, and we lived through the situation that happened in the short rental town right next door to the lady. There was over 70 cars that day, the police did come. I've showed videos to Kevin, I have the video, and if I showed it to you, you'd be disgusted with Ocean Springs right now. And we have a lady that this time didn't see it because she was so down on what happened in the last meeting with the planning commission. She's in the middle, she's going to have one on each side of her, two behind her. A brand-new house is built on Holcomb, renting rooms out, and a brand-new house just built. Arbor Vista, right behind me, Mitchell, there's 10 in the area around me. You turn my neighbor to the, which, all these people, they're all going down, they're all retired, they call Sean, because I take care of people in the neighborhood, they're all retired, I take care of all of them. So, what's going down here is, I have grandchildren that are down that street, they cannot, my wife cannot drive those kids to that, to that neighborhood. And I brought this up to the planning commission, background checks on everybody coming to these houses, it was a no-brainer, it was a Gulfport resident bought that, rented that house that day. It was being live-strained because I'm in my work show today, and there was a party coming that night, and a girl in the corner advised me of that, and that's when I called the police. We shut down a big car. I would hate to see one of my grandchildren or anybody else's grandchildren come around that neighborhood, and somebody being in one of them houses, that's a sex offender or somebody we don't know, because we had done no background checks on who rented these houses out of. And it is going to get out of control. And if it does come down to that, I'm just going to have to look everyone in all's eye and tell you, I told you so, and Lord help us if something like that goes down one of the children, and something happens to one of his kids. But we've got to stop this. Our neighborhood has been turned into a commercial. Our neighborhood has been turned into a commercial area, and has been residential, stopped enough to have 25 years.
Thank you. Karen, I'm gonna ask you this, since your daughter's not here. So, short-term rentals are pretty strict about problems.
Yes.
When they have problems, so, when the police show up at this party, how does that get to the planning department, so this guy does, this person does not get that license renewed?
And this is sounding familiar, but typically, the complaints would come, when I was handling it, to the planning department, either through the alderman or a private citizen may call, so, in a variety of ways it gets reported. And then it would always be following up with that permit holder, giving them a warning, looking into it, depending on the severity of the infraction, handling it that way. And I, that one incident is sounding familiar, but I can't remember how.
We need to look.
There was, hold on.
I remember some emails.
There was that one, and there was one on Sherwood. And I was, I looked at the ordinance, and I was understanding that when there's an incident, it's basically shut down, and they're not renewed. Well, all of a sudden, the one on Sherwood, and I don't know about the one on McCool, but as far as I know, the one on Sherwood and McCool has been renewed, and that even come before the board. That's one thing I'm aggravated about.
Kevin, I'm in the, I'm in the same boat with you, Kevin. I can give you two examples in my ward, where there were parties from people out of New Orleans, one out of Houston, where the police came by, stopped them, and no report was made, and there's still VRBOs.
We've got to figure out a way where police and code enforcement and planning get these notices, or somehow or another. I know you don't know every short-term rental you pull up to, but there needs to be some, a lot, there's gotta be, there's gotta be a list, huh?
Yeah, the intent when the ordinance was written back in 15, was that we, that the planning department would maintain the list, and make that available at any time, to any, any requester, including internal, and that any complaints needed to be forwarded, so that we could, and we, we have issued warnings, and, and in many cases, if I remember incorrectly, a warning was issued, and then that person just did not renew. If it was a severe enough, the intent was that if a severe complaint came in, we would look, confirm that it happened, either through, in that case, you have video evidence, obviously, or a police report, and then if it was in a severe nature, that would be forwarded to the board. The board can revoke, it's not an automatic revocation.
So that was my understanding, with our ordinance, the verbiage was, to my understanding, if there was a formal complaint, so in this particular situation, a formal police report was filed, that was an immediate, the permit does not get renewed for two years.
On board, on board.
At board, actually.
So, could there possibly be a way, and I'm just asking, seeing as that the reverse way is not being productive as far as reporting, that when these permits come up for renewal...
They are checked.
Then we can vet them, so to speak, for any formal police, that is, that is part of the process.
But report or no report, chief, if they'll go to a house, it's, it's on our daily report, right? That they had a complaint?
Yeah.
With address?
Yeah, and address, but it just has an address in the complaint.
Yeah, but the planning gets a copy of it, and they know who, they can run through.
They can, but I guess my question is this, can't we go in the CAD system with this 115 list of addresses and flag them as VRBA?
I don't know, because we're having issues with that system.
The thing is, they change.
When a call comes up, it just says this is a short-term rental.
At the time, we were told that was not possible.
It's possible, we're having issues with.
But, well, to answer Jennifer's question, that is part of the renewal process, is emails are sent both to code enforcement and to the court to ask for any, any police reports or notes. So even if a report is not filed, if there's any CAD notes, that information will come back, and all of the ones that I personally dealt with were not related to uses of short-term rental.
What if, what if there was a sticker like that Chamber hat, like Chamber hat stickers on business, what if there was a nice little logo or something that had, people had to post on the front entrance to the house, small, and that said it was a short-term rental? That would...
On both of the ones, see, identified, 300 McCool, enter with both of those, there was video and pictures sent.
And I don't know.
And both of them got renewed without a review by them.
Yeah, we've got an internal...
Both of them got renewed, and the police was out there twice and made both under leave.
And per our ordinance as well, if I'm correct, there's limits on the number of occupants, there's limits on the number of parking spots.
No parking in the street.
Correct.
Okay, so we've got, we've got an internal issue we need to deal with, and, and we gotta figure out how we're gonna handle this, because it's pretty clear in the ordinance that these short-term rental businesses are under some severe penalties if they don't operate correctly. And, and we've got something that's fallen through the cracks here that we need to fix, and we need to look at that internally, so we'll do that. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the board, other comments?
So, I own short-term rentals here. I also live between two short-term rentals here, so I mean, I see both sides. I don't have kids, so my gentleman makes a statement, hey, we're worried about our kids, and we don't want them, you know, we don't want them to have neighbors. I can see that side, you know, it's, it's hard not to see every side. But, so I own two rentals, and they don't really make money like they used to. And I'm listening to you guys discuss all this stuff, and I'm thinking, I don't even believe it's gonna be an issue in two years, because people aren't gonna make money, they're not gonna invest anymore in the rest of Ocean Springs if they can't. That's just, you know, my thought. The market will decide, you know, like Karen said earlier, it's, it is what it is. I'm thinking about turning both of mine to long-term rentals. Like the gentleman also said, who's against it, now, every short-term rental he saw was fixed up, you know, that raises everybody's bet. So there's positives to both, so I see both, but I just don't think we can just make rules as we go on, just to please certain people.
Thank you.
Okay, probably have time for one more, if anybody else wants to address the board.
I'm sorry, no, I can't do that. I've already let, already told Richard he couldn't do it.
Something that Ms. Carter said in the last meeting we had, that's all I want to say.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Well, if you would, if you wouldn't mind, Sean, why don't you address that with, after the meeting's over with, with Will, and he can pass that.
I just wanna make sure that she got the maps to y'all, like she put it down.
Okay, we'll find that out, thank you.
Is this where we can speak after everything that's on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm glad I could clear that.
All right.
This is concerning the leak on 123 Morris Snow Road. My name is Tonya Bond. The leak started about 6 o'clock on September the 3rd, and we weren't aware of that till we went over one day, because nobody lives there. My mother-in-law posted, saying 2020, so nobody's there anyway, nobody's living there. Ed Hibbert brought a paper, I think, just, I don't know, it came up, I think at the last board meeting, about the leak on 123 Morris Snow Road. Do you remember that at all?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So my understanding was that the board did approve an adjustment for the sewer portion, right? Okay, and I, but I still see that we owe $1,500, and our, usually our flat rate is 70, 60 to 75, flat rate.
We don't have a flat rate, it's meter.
I don't know what you have, all I know is that we're not using the water, and we don't owe $1,500. So what do I need to do?
You wanna address that?
I think, I think you all wrote off all the sewer.
That's all we're allowed to write off.
That's water that went through the meter, correct?
Well, correct, so we don't normally write off water. Eddie said something to me about you thought someone had did something at your home. Okay. I think she thinks someone that did work out there might have done something to the lines.
Here it is. They, this says, it says... It's right here.
For drain use only.
For drain use only, and that's what whoever...
Somebody patched your line with a drain connector, not a pressure connector.
The water coming into...
Ma'am, if I may, I saw that, and I went out there with one of our public works folks. Yes, ma'am, I did, and that was on your side of the meter, and it appears to us that AT&amp;T, or whoever was boring in that area, cut that line, excuse me, cut that line, and then put this cheap patch on it, and it held till they got out of there and covered it up. But it's on your side of the meter, not ours, and we did obviously take the sewer part off. But I would suggest that you get with AT&amp;T and try to file a claim against them.
My understanding on the thing that Eddie had, it had C-Spire written across.
Or C-Spire, I apologize, correct. I could not remember whether it was AT&amp;T or C-Spire. Yes, ma'am, it was not anything that the city did, or our people did, C-Spire or AT&amp;T, another boring company did it, because it was obvious. We obviously, if, if, if by chance we'd ever done, damaged it, I think Alan will agree, we wouldn't put an automobile deal on it, or whatever that rubber hose is.
So until C-Spire said, okay, we did it, do we keep, need to keep paying for water? We didn't use?
Well, we could work out a payment plan that helped with that.
Well, she already did that.
Okay.
Patty, can we suspend that payment till she gets...
Are you working with them, and does Alan, or does Daryl have a number that could help this lady to speak to C-Spire, who's our connections?
Got a number at the office.
Yeah.
You have a boring contractor?
Yeah, ma'am, we dealt, and I think, and I apologize, the gentleman, possibly your brother, possibly a kin of yours, we talked to him, and we did make the offer of an arrangement for paying the bill.
Well, I guess you're telling me there was an arrangement, ma'am.
Okay, and whoever, we made an arrangement with him to come down here and...
$100 a month.
Okay.
So that would put it, what, about $40 over the normal bill?
Well, if they agreed to 100, it would be 100 plus that, unless they agreed to, you know, 40 or 50.
I, I don't know, Ms. Bond, what else we can do? Like I said, we didn't do it, we discovered it after the fact, I realized you're a victim of a boring company, AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T or C-Spire, whoever did.
Ken, I think, like, we asked Will, can we suspend that temporarily while she works out, getting the money from the contractor that damaged the line? Is that possible?
I'd like to research it first, and I can let you know if that's what we're being...
Because that would make the most sense, because we had to say a similar deal in, in my ward, when they were bored, a sewer line, they hit a water line and a sewer line, it completely washed out a person's yard, and they had to pay for that repair, but that was a little different, because it wasn't involving billing from us. But I, I think that's the best course of action, is to suspend it if possible, let her get the money from AT&amp;T, or make AT&amp;T pay, or C-Spire, so many, yeah, to pay the bill.
Has someone gave you some numbers to speak to C-Spire, ma'am? Has anybody gave you anything to help you?
I gave her brother the numbers, but we can do it again. I apologize, I don't know, the gentleman that I dealt with, I don't know what relation. He's got, we should help, we should help too.
Yeah, so the building department and public works can try to get some numbers to help, and maybe if the city tries to throw a little bit, you know, it's their fault, we might get a little further with them, in my situation.
Alan, I don't have those numbers handy, can you bring them by? You know where the house is at, just bring them by.
What's the address, and I'll bring it to them.
Nobody's there.
What's your address where you stayed?
Where I live, my home, 7705 Semmes, S-E-M-M-E-S Road, Van Cleve.
So y'all don't, that's one reason y'all don't live at the house, or nobody was there.
You got a phone number you can be reached at?
Yes.
Why don't you just get that, get that phone number?
Don't give it out here, yeah. Don't give any more information out, she'll be going on by you for more than...
All right, thank you. Well, we'll try to help them as we can, thank you.
Yeah, and we can suspend the other part for now.
I don't think we should pay that.
Well, they're just telling, so they're just telling, yes, ma'am, what they're telling you is by law, the water, we can't just forgive it, it needs to be paid, so we're gonna try to help you to get some people that should pay. Because the water's a public utility, and it belongs to everybody, and the water still got ran through the lines, that's what I'm trying to say. But we'll try to help you.
So that's what the big team has, uh...
It's just water, yes, ma'am. I guess he did.
Okay, that concludes public comment for the evening. Moving on to Mayor and Alderman's report forum, Ms. Burgess?
I'm good.
Alan, do you know when they're gonna pay you from the corner of where the chiropractor worked by, off of Washington?
Probably not this week coming up with the fall committee.
They need more gravel, if that's the case.
I'll be addressing it.
That's it. I've got one thing. You know, everybody's aware of the, the situation, that the unfortunate act of terrorism that happened in New Orleans, over the New Year's holiday, and, you know, it's, it's pretty close to home, and, and I don't think anybody's immune to that, unfortunately, in this day and age. So, we have festivals, we have a lot of people that congregate in our town, and, and for us to think that we're immune to that is fooling ourselves. So what I have done is asked Chief Lemire and Chief Heath to get together and go over our plans for these festivals, and securing the footprint of the festivals. Still allowing, obviously, foot traffic, but to maybe head off something that could be very disastrous to Ocean Springs in the future. So they are going to, to look at the plans, and they will come back with a report on how we can secure the footprints of some of these festivals, particularly the Peter Anderson Festival, which, you know, is obviously our largest festival, and maybe even Cruising the Coast, so. We just wanna bring that to everybody's attention. We are aware of it, and we're gonna try to, to do something, and then keep those folks in your prayers, it's pretty, pretty close to home, some of those kids. Anyway, I need a motion to go into closed session to determine the necessity to go into executive session.
Little move, mayor.
Second, second by, Mr. Wade. All in favor? Most board is in closed session.
Ms. Bond, is this your brother? Who is, was the man that I talked to, is that your brother?
I made sure that we tell Eddie, tell the road that you're here, but they'll need this suspended for now.
Okay, so who is the man?
I don't have that in mind. And he knows, because he started talking to me about it today, and I said, send us an email if we're gonna get in there and talk about it.
That was your husband?
Because they're gonna ask, and I didn't realize part of it had already, he did say something like that.
I got, I got the impression that the, y'all were brother, brother sister. Yeah, go, go ahead and grab him.
No, no. Well, he might, you might, you talked to Eddie, he'll probably know this one, so...
I have forgotten, and this businessman I talked to...
Eddie has said, so you talked to him, so he's on the phone, or was it...
Testing. Okay, there was a motion to stay in executive session to discuss litigation on Ward Avenue, litigation on Myrtle Avenue, personnel in the planning department, and possible litigation with SecureX. At that point, Will Norman will recuse and leave the room.